Evening. Welcome to our second live board selectman's meeting. I'd like to start the meeting out with a pledge of allegiance. Could all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Manifests. Just get some business out of the way here. Everybody have a chance to look it over?
I'll make a motion that we approve the accounts payable list of July 13th and the payroll manifest of July 14th.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous? Was that the minutes too? I'm sorry, Donna. Or was that was just the manifest?
Manifest.
All right. Anybody had a chance to look at the minutes? It was not here on the last meeting.
I didn't have any issue with them.
Neither do I.
No issue. Donna.
Were there any corrections? Do we know?
I don't think there were any, Rain, right? I don't think so.
All right, I'll make a motion when you approve the minutes of June 22nd, 2020.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Sign committee boards, budget is out of season right now, so isn't CIP?
We will be having the first budget meeting coming up, kind of like an impromptu, I, but I don't think anything is going to be discussed.
Well, the budget whole cycle is going to change, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So I think we'll talk about that next meeting, so.
You're going to name officers and everything?
I believe so.
Yeah, sure.
It's Thursday, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Planning board?
Yeah, planning board, we had a Zoom meeting last Wednesday. We had two cases. We had, again, the people from the 14 lot subdivision on Mitchell Road. That one's been continued. And then we had an application looking to a lot line adjustment, and that application was approved. And as I said to Chris earlier, I was asked if I could get numbers for the last traffic studies for Mitchell Road and also Maple Ridge, if that's available.
Okay. 300th?
Didn't make that one.
Okay. And any updates on Marston?
No, I haven't been out there. The rain certainly has to be helping the grass.
Yep, we're working on getting its first mowing done.
Excellent.
We got some weeds, we got some grass, we got some dirt, so.
Yep.
Combination.
Yeah.
At least some of it's grass.
With the downpours, there's, I mean, there's enough grass that there's no erosion issues now?
I haven't noticed anything and I haven't heard of anything from people that have been to the backside of it, so I think what we did this spring is holding up better than what it was last fall.
Certainly has come a long way since last year. Looks good. Looks good. Okay. Town administrators report?
All right. So as you mentioned, we're back on TV, we're back on channel 22. We got the camera situation at least working, as far as we can tell. We've tested it, and as far as we know, on TV tonight. We're expecting some options from the tech vendor on what it's going to take to do this and Zoom together. Those will probably get here this week. Those guys are buried this week because everybody's trying to do the same kinds of things. But we'll have, we should have some options on, you know, what's possible anyway, whether we decide to spend what it's going to take to do it, I don't know.
So now that I'm just thinking about it, if we're broadcasting, the purpose for incorporating the Zoom is just to allow people to ask questions? Is that what it is?
Yes.
It also reaches people that don't have cable TV.
Okay.
Which is a growing.
So that would become a standard practice moving forward, or?
Well, you'll have to look at what the options are and we'll have to see technically what's really possible and what really works.
Yep.
If it's transparent and, you know, we find a way to put a screen up that shows Zoom participants and whatnot.
Yep, yep.
The hardest part, the places that I've seen that do it well have a person monitoring it live and helping to either select a camera, we have just a one camera operation.
Yeah, non-participating proctor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so they are both orchestrating the Zoom stuff for the chair and picking the inputs there, what's being broadcast and what everyone's looking at.
Yep.
So I suspect, I don't know, but I suspect that that's going to be the stumbling block for us, is do we want to move to something where we've got somebody, we're paying somebody to sit here and do that for us? That's a big jump from what we do. We have funded everything thus far through the Cable Franchise Fund, which is paid by people who pay for cable TV, so they're paying a little bit extra each month.
Right.
You know, we take that money and use it on this equipment, and the school's equipment, so those are the two hurdles that we'll have to get through. There may be a way to just carry the, simply carry the TV broadcast to the internet so that if you don't have cable TV, you can watch, but you can't participate remotely or something like that. We'll learn more about it.
Yeah. I mean, we only did the Zoom thing as an extreme measure because of the emergency order and the quarantine, but we never really discussed it as a new precedent, so.
We can't facilitate that with people here, though, I mean. If we had 20 people walking right now, we're in violation. We would be.
No, I agree with what you're saying. In this particular time, we're not, there's no participation option where Zoom would be that participation option, but long-term. Yeah.
Then I suppose there's an option where you just switch to everybody, everybody doing Zoom, right?
Then you have, but then you have the audio issues.
You might, yeah.
Yeah, people trolling the meetings. One option that we have with our Zoom account is to do a YouTube simulcast, so we'd have to link it to the town's YouTube account, and it would be non participatory, but it would emulate the TV broadcast. So we'd be broadcasting on two different media, right?
Yep.
But still not allow for the, you know, the interactivity. I mean, people watching on TV can't submit questions, so should we be obligated to provide that channel to people watching other than television, right?
Right.
I think it's a useful tool to be able to figure some way of getting it to work where those at home who are afraid to come in because obviously the pandemic and all that, to allow them an opportunity to partake in these meetings. That being said, you know, they're predicting another round coming fall. Are we going to be setting up provisions and?
If we have to revert to Zoom again, we're pretty well ready. We've got that figured out.
Okay.
That's, that's a fallback, I think.
Yeah, I would say. Have we gotten any reimbursement from the state or from the funds at all?
Our submission goes in Wednesday on that, our first batch will go in Wednesday. A lot of that stuff will be in there.
Okay. Okay.
So that's the, that's the technology update. Just, you haven't met since town meeting, I just wanted to fill you in on just some of the result things that require some follow-up. We now have a budget, you'll talk about the budget later tonight. The stormwater asset management didn't get the necessary votes. We've communicated with the engineer in the state and said, hey, it's all right, maybe next year we can try again. They're willing to hear from us again. The capital reserve fund deposits, those would typically be done mid-year. We haven't moved the cash yet because we want to get a good grip of our cash flow. Those are, you can do those anytime during the year, it's not, no rush. The SB2 budget committee meets this week, and I suspect they'll start talking about the calendar. In practical terms, the process just moves up for us. If you look at the calendar from last year and what the statutory calendar is, the public hearing for the town budget will take place about a month earlier than it did in 2020. So we'll have to do everything about a month earlier than we are accustomed to. We have, we have, we've always, at least in my time here, it's been pretty loose, you know, we're cobbling things together and making decisions right up until the last minute before you as a board hand things to the budget committee for a final, you know, take this to the hearing. We could probably still do that, but it's going to have to be earlier. You're going to have to get finished about a month earlier to stay on the SB2 calendar, so.
Well, I think we're going to have to be more buttoned up as well because we're going to have to explain, you know, what we're doing. There's going to have to be more of a PR out there.
Yeah, we have, so you take that as far, that's what changes up through the public hearing, and then from the public hearing through the vote, through the deliberative session and then the Tuesday vote, you've got to do a lot more public education because you don't, you don't have town meeting to do that.
Right, exactly.
But other than that, you know, we have to, you will have to set a default budget. That's probably something that will happen early in the process. I haven't watched the budget committee do that with the school district, but.
So they set, budget committee sets it, or we do? We do.
The governing body does.
Okay.
Sets the, but you've never done it before, so we'll have to kind of find our way through that.
Is there, is there, so if we set the default budget, is there any, like, does the budget committee come back and say, we know we don't agree with that default budget? Is there any challenge for the default budget that we set?
There's an algorithm to it, so it's basically previous year's budget.
No, I get that. I understand that. I understand that.
I think the law just gives the authority to the governing body, which is you.
Okay. Okay, right.
Yeah.
It's something that you'll want to be on the same page with the budget committee about, just politically, but process wise and legally, I think that's your number to set.
Just because there's room for interpretation on some things.
There is, there is.
Yeah, especially in this first year, where, you know, what's a one-time thing? You know, one-time expenses are going to be something we have to learn how to define and how we present them going forward, and we'll probably wish we had done something differently this year when next year pulls around.
Hey, Chris, we've talked a couple times about biannual budgets. Are there many SB2 towns who have biannual budgets?
I don't know. There aren't many that have biannual budgets, period.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, there's a way to do it, it belongs.
Okay.
Anything else on SB2? The road acceptances, Chad, we're attorney about that briefly. We're reviewing some old planning board activity, trying to find subdivision plans essentially for those, the two roads that were accepted. One of them's really old, one's not quite so old. We're going to have to figure out where those roads are relative to what's in the plans. What is the right of way that we now have to work within? Attorney suggested, once you have something, some sort of plan to start with, it's probably worth hiring somebody to just kind of ballpark, survey and say, yeah, you're close here or there, or, you know, you've got an X foot wide right of way to work with, that becomes your town road. We're going to have to figure out what our starting point is. Because if we don't have some understanding of that to begin with, we are surely headed for conflict in the future about roadwork. When it comes time to take down a tree, or put in a culvert, or do any number of things on a town road, if we don't have some general consensus about what the town's road is, we're going to have a fight on our hands later, so we really need to figure that piece out. So that's what we're working on as a baseline. Highland Road, Highland looks pretty straightforward, it's younger, it's wider, it's probably a little easier. We're still digging on the North River Lake road history. That didn't start, as far as I can tell thus far, it didn't start with one big subdivision that laid everything out, it was so much more hodgepodge. So what we just, what we just took over is still unknown to us, so that's what we're working on there. And then lastly, the last, last article was about redistricting commission, was a petition thing, the last part of that was you are to notify the governor, and the legislative government, the town voted on this, and then you'll sign a letter to that effect, so you met your obligation. And I think that is it on town meeting, the last town meeting. The next round of questions that will come up around the deliberative session and stuff like that, we don't have to tackle now, when to do that relative to the school district, et cetera, et cetera. That's what's going on.
Right.
Can you reach out to NHMA and see what they have for material that might be helpful to us? Transitional material?
Yeah, there is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, yeah, this is how you do it when you're traditional, and this is how you do it with SB2. I haven't found anything yet on going from one to the other.
Yeah.
My next step is to ask my peers if anybody's gone through it lately. I don't know of many towns that have, we're kind of late in doing it relative to those that are already in it, so I'm going to chase that down too. And that's it for that part.
Okay. Action items review from last meeting? I thought we were going to have a section here where it actually spells it out, what we're going to go over. I'm sorry?
No, I think we, I think.
It weren't.
They weren't? Okay.
Yeah, we didn't.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Assessing?
We are the assessing.
Yeah, I know, but if it was anything.
Didn't appear looking at those.
All right.
Do you want to deal with all that now?
Yeah, I think we have two items.
Yep.
Do we have copies of them?
Yeah.
He doesn't do the email.
Yeah, you, yeah, you don't have printed copies, you got them from Kelly.
From, yeah, email, yeah.
One is a small dollar abatement, the other one is a restoration of involuntarily merged lots.
Yeah. Any discussions on that?
I didn't have any issue with them, they both seemed pretty straightforward.
So I'd like to take them one at a time.
Okay.
So the man.
Stephen Hill?
Yeah, the luck, I mean, I don't have any, I don't have any problem with either of them, I just have questions on the other one, so.
You want to tackle that one first?
Yeah, the man one, it's fine.
Okay. You need a motion? Somebody want to make a motion?
I don't have the text of it, so I can't phrase it right.
John?
That's what I'm actually reading right now. This is the abatement we're talking about.
Yep.
For 70 Stephen Hill. Where is the, for man, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we're on the same page or something?
Yes, that's the one.
I make a motion to approve. Where's the subtitle to this? I don't see it, that's right. Sorry, just give me one second, I apologize.
Can we just say, make a motion, we approve the LUCT abatement for map 70 lot 83?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
On the other one, I just wanted to just make sure I understand this relative to the similar case that we had before. So in this case, the lots are, would be unmerged, but the tax bill in December would only reflect from the second half year, not going all the way back, was that correct?
Yeah, that logically makes sense.
Okay, because it was the other way in the other one, right?
Different time of year, before the first tax bill. Before April 1st. It was done before April 1st.
I think so.
There was trickiness about that.
Yeah.
Typically, everything's anchored on what the condition was on April 1st.
Yeah.
And so if you, the last one you did was before April 1st. More recent than that?
Yeah, I think so. I don't want to debate that, but it was just like, in this situation, this is like, the lots will be unmerged and then the December tax bill will reflect from the date from unmerged. Okay, that's fine, that was my.
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on that? Do we have a motion?
Wait, did I say that right? Because, Chris, if you look at the agenda, I just did the LUCT for map 70 83. Should that have been 46-1?
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, I think.
We were talking about 70 Stephen Hill, right?
I did, yeah, yeah. So should I, should we rescind?
I can just, I didn't put it in yet, I just had Mr. Moore make a motion to approve the LUCT abatement issue, and I don't have the rest, I was going to ask him, so.
So that would be map 46 lot 1.
Map.
46 lot 1?
Yeah.
Thanks.
So then I'll make a motion that we approve the un-merger request for map 70 lot 83.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Map 70 lot 83.
Thank you, Donna.
Sorry about that, confusing.
Okay. We'll move right into the general business. Quarter two finance update.
All right, so you have the June 30 actuals on expenses and revenues. Overall, we're, I mean, this, we now have a budget. So with that question behind us, we're in good shape. We've spent, in the first 50% of the year, we've spent about 40% of the budget, so a big chunk of the unspent money is road projects, which you're going to hopefully approve shortly. There's, you know, a couple hundred thousand in play there. Even with that, we're going to be, we're going to be in good shape for the year. You'll know at tax rate setting time, you'll have a good idea of what your, what your revenue picture will be. Revenues are really coming back, they're clawing their way back, so that's feeling much better. Granted, if the whole world falls apart again.
Yep.
We don't, we don't know, but having been through that once, we saw what that did to our expenses, and we didn't take a huge expense hit through that shutdown period, so overall, I think we're going to be okay for the year. You're going to have some flexibility in tax rate setting time around either using fund balance to offset revenues. About, I don't know what the last time we had an opportunity to discuss this, I think it was probably two days before town meeting, the governor gave select boards the authority to reduce the appropriate, reduce the budget for the year. So you'll have, you can do that or take money out of the fund balance if you want when it comes time to set the tax rate.
Yep.
And so, you know, with, with a couple of vacancies and, you know, looking at where these costs fall, the real wildcard at this point is the last couple of elections in terms of costs. Everything else we see pretty well, and we'll be able to manage to this budget pretty well, so we're comfortable with where we are. And you won't feel panicked at tax rate setting time, where we sit right now. If you want to talk about anything specific, we can get into that, but.
The only question I had, Chris, was around, so we're like a little more than halfway through the year, and looking at the merit compensation pool, where we haven't spent anything there, how have you been approaching that in terms of, you know, when does that get paid out and?
Well, remember, this one, we never, we never apply any cost to that line, so any raises that have taken effect during the year will be, let's say it's a police department raise, those are shown up in the police payroll line, so those.
Okay, yep.
You know, if everything remains, if every position remains full all year, at the expected amount of hours, those lines would be over budget.
Okay. Yep, yep.
And this will always show as a zero.
Okay.
That's the.
I forgot that.
Methodology.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Clumsy as heck, but.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Deputy treasurer appointment?
Yeah, we have requests from your own treasurer to appoint a deputy, they are in training mode, everything seems to be transitioning sufficiently.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns about, everybody good with it?
I'll make a motion that the select board approve the appointment of Laura Bascom as deputy treasurer.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right. Paving bids. I have a quick question in regards to the paving bids, Chris. This is the same company that did Ledge Farm, that won the bids?
Yes, they've actually done everything for us the last two years.
Two years?
Yeah.
So is going forward, Ledge Farm was just a fluke kind of thing, right?
Yeah, no, we're comfortable working with them, and they are making us whole on what they were responsible for.
Okay.
Actually had a thing pop up around South Summer in Canton a couple weeks ago around shoulder gravel, they jumped on it, fixed it, Sean was very satisfied with their response on that. So he's comfortable working with them, he's now been through a whole project with them and is satisfied there. We only got, they got two responses to our bid, which is a little bit less than what we're accustomed to.
Right.
We often have three, sometimes four, so that was a little disappointing, but like the big boys.
Too small, yeah.
Pike and, what's the other big boy?
Bell.
Brooks.
Bell and Flynn?
No, the biggest, Brock is the.
Brock, yeah.
I think Brock is doing Logan's Runways right now, so, you know.
Sorry.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was disappointing in that, you know, we didn't get more, but we're a little under what kind of where we expected to be. The price of oil has not turned into a big drop in the price of asphalt, which is, we have seen late this past winter, we had our hopes up that things were going to get really, really cheap.
So did Sean give you any indication that he feels that the bid from advance was more than fair?
Yeah, he pushed back on a couple pieces with, to make sure we were apples and apples.
Yeah.
And got satisfied with those.
Okay.
What does, what does it mean on the bottom to set a curious, if you know or not? Estimate total without handwork?
Handwork is the, is the finished work around driveway intersection, where driveways meet the road. You kind of have to leave that to know at the last minute in the field, once you get the road paved, what is it, how long is it going to take to dovetail the paved driveways or the gravel driveways with the road, so they don't estimate that upfront. I think it's a timing materials thing at the very end. But the only piece of handwork is. But the only piece of handwork is the driveways versus the road itself.
Okay. Everybody good with the bid? Tyler?
Yeah.
Need a motion, Chris?
Yeah, since it's a big chunk of money, I would agree with you guys, assessing that.
Somebody wanna make a bid?
Make a motion that the select board approves the paving bid from advanced excavating and paving, and authorizes the town administrator to enter into related contracts.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? And I guess we have some community center facility issues.
Yeah, we got a pile of facility things all of a sudden. We, we have a, we have a employee committee that, is a kind of a loss prevention mechanism, a safety mechanism for non-management employees, really, to address safety concern. They did, they with the fire department did a walkthrough of this building, they've typically done walkthroughs of each town building every year, formalized the fire inspection piece for this building this year, for the first time in a long time, which generated a list of stuff that you saw, most of it manageable, we got some exit lights out, some ceiling panels and some holes and lights. We do have some door work to do, the boiler room needs a different kind of door, all, all things I think we can manage, but I, I wanted to just put them in front of you and say, these are things that are profound and need to be tackled. Second thing going on here, in response to a concern raised by an employee, asked the health inspector to do some kind of entry level mold testing, and he found, he got some of those kind of starter kit, basic kit things. Response in the police department, something in the air, and something in the wayback building, it's no surprise to anybody, but, so, those things are, you can, my understanding of them is, they'll pretty much always find something, they're, they're really basic, so, I've called RPF, who did some work in this building some years ago, three or four, they're gonna come over and talk with us about what other kinds of testing they can do, or what other kinds of surveys they can do about airflow and stuff in the building.
It said the rear of the building tested positive, which doesn't surprise me, but we're not using it.
No, we really, we, we have a couple things stored back there, but we really don't actively use it at all, nobody's back there routinely. So I, I am expecting to hear from him today, or, well, not today, but probably tomorrow in terms of what that looks like, and I'll fill you in at your next meeting. Also, they do asbestos testing, so we're gonna have them do floor in the kitchen here, which we had, the last time we talked about that kitchen, we left off with, we're gonna check that, to open the path to renovating that kitchen, hopefully. And third, we've got, we got issues with our water supply at the highway garage, I don't know if you are even aware of this, but the water for the toilets and the sinks at the highway garage comes out of the river, it's surface water, there's pipes that goes out, floats in the river, and it's been that way since, back in the day. The, the real low water levels, we're out of it now, but they were, they were dry there for a while, and we got some other concerns around that, so we're gonna, we've got vendors looking at that, too. I'll talk with you offline about a couple of the impacts of those things, but we'll have more for a couple of weeks on that, too. Just another, another design flaw with that entire facility, so, we're working on that, and I think that's the only things that we know are wrong.
So on the, on the, on the inspection, Chris, we're just picking off one by one, like the tiles and the smaller stuff?
Yeah, I, I actually got my, I went to Lewis today and got ceiling tiles, there's a couple holes, we'll have to find somebody to patch those, it's probably a little bit beyond my ability. The, the door things are gonna require some special skills, and there's one part around the boiler room, I'm not sure how we're gonna tackle yet, the separation in the boiler room, that one could give us a little bit of trouble, but we're gonna, we're gonna pick off the easy stuff first, and, I go from there.
So you don't need approval for anything, it just falls under like maintenance?
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a budget line for that, and, you know, we may blow it up, but whatever, these aren't, these aren't really optional things, so, we'll take care of it. There's not a, there's not, I talked with the inspector, the firefighter, you know, and I said, okay, which of these is, you know, do I need to drop what I'm doing with any of these and fix this, he said, no, as long as we're moving forward on them, you're okay, don't have any real, real significant worries. But we do need to address them, so.
So Chris, do we have a plan in place of what to do with that back room?
No, you, you've gotta decide when you wanna, when you wanna tackle it, if you-
Because at some point, that's gonna become a more of a headache than what it is right now.
Well, it kind of-
Now, I'm not saying we do it right this year, I'm just saying that it's something we should be looking at down the road.
Well, that's what, one of the things that I was thinking about is like, should we, and I don't know if falls under the existing one or not, but should we be looking at having some kind of a capital reserve fund around the buildings, right, and particularly that, we should do something with that, so maybe we don't, I don't know how much it's gonna cost, maybe we don't do it now, but we, maybe we save for the next-
Yeah.
-four years or whatever, and then do it, and I don't know if that makes sense, but-
And I do know that, was it, the school was looking for extra space?
Yeah, so, yeah, that, I sent you that as part of your, not your next meeting, but the one after, a committee from the school board is gonna come and talk to you about sharing services and sharing space, they're, they're just in exploratory mode, so-
Yeah, yeah.
That inevitably leads into talk about this building globally, not just that back section, but with all of the, with all these, not these ticky tack things, but with those bigger questions growing, it, it might be time to just get a group of people together that know this world, and, you know, you've had, you've had a building committee in the past, you, you, you know, we-
The ticky tack things add up, and they can turn into something big.
Yep, and, you know, you've, on the CIP, and, you know, the CIP touches on these things once in a while, but the CIP isn't a, it's not a facility expertise thing, we, we may be getting to the point with, you know, there's a major project maybe coming at the school that may spill over to us somehow, we've just been through chaos with the Old Town Hall, you know, you keep asking, what are we doing with all this?
I, I like the idea of a capital reserve fund, I like the idea of that, maybe that's something we can maybe put together for the next budget or something, the next CIP, or what, you know, something of that line.
I do like the idea, though, of also, of like, maybe we have a committee of, you know, some representative from the board, the building inspector, the fire department, and some community residents to start to think about this building and the other buildings as well.
The problem with what we start there thinking about, it all comes down to one thing, how much money do we want to spend?
Well-
Because we can talk about all the projects that go ahead and get ideas, but there's gotta be a number that's put out there, because, you know, is that back building there, I mean, to revamp it is gonna be huge, to flatten it and then put something else brand new up there, I mean, that's where we probably gotta look at the different, I think the cause and effect.
It's easier to work with something that's already existing, providing that it's not too far gone, than it is to totally start over again.
Just cut it down and not use it.
Again-
Do we need the space, right?
But, what-
That's right.
Yeah.
It is a fair question.
We're not, we're not screaming for that kind of space.
No, no, but the, the school will be, if they, especially if they separate, they're gonna be looking for their own space and what have you, and then, here we got, we got space right there that, you know, that they're looking, they could be looking at, and then, at what point, you know, like John was mentioning, you know, is it easier to tear it down, or is it revamp it, you know, for more space for, like, the school or other offices and what have you?
But isn't it better if we have a vision-
I, yeah.
-of all of the buildings?
I agree.
If we had an assessment of, here's what's going on here, here's what's going on here, here's what's going on here, we think, moving forward in the future, these would be the recommendations of what we do with them.
I mean, I know everybody loves the old buildings, every, you know, everybody liked the old farmhouse and all that stuff, but some of these buildings, they're beyond where we could afford to keep them up to code, and I worry sometimes that somebody's not gonna go in there and get hurt and say-
Yeah.
"You own it Nottingham," I mean-
That back building is a-
Like that fire escape over at the Old Town Hall, that thing's unattached to the building, but it's still standing there.
Yeah, but how do you tear down, I mean, I understand where you're coming from that, and I want to speak on behalf of that building there, since it can't speak for itself, at being a two-hundred-year-old town building in our historic Nottingham.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I, I love the building.
I mean, this back here is a building from nineteen fifty-
Yeah.
There's no historical value, there's no, it's just empty, you know, is where something like that, I think, you know, if you're gonna do something to preserve it, it sits there.
I look at, I use the example of the old Watson Academy in Epping, right, it was condemned, it was, they said, stay out of it, and the people came and said, we're willing to pay for that, to get it back to, and they use it just like we use that, you know, I mean, not that-
Well, I was at the actual Old Town Building right there, just to not quickly get off the subject, but I was sitting there, my mom's been doing little cleanups in the back room, and, you know, stuff like this around there, and, you know, it's a beautiful space inside there.
Yes, it is.
You know, and it's two-hundred-year-old, but, you know, I was sitting there, and I kept thinking to myself, as I was there, is what you were saying, what is a purpose? We can't go to the people in town and say, we wanna drop thirty thousand dollars or whatever, I'll fix this, and not have a goal to say why we're doing it.
Correct.
So I was just sat there probably a good fifteen, twenty minutes, trying to think of, what could we do with this building to get support from the people to spend the money to do it?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I don't want to spend the money if we're not gonna do anything with it, I mean, I understand where you're going with that, I mean, that is definitely the, where I'm looking forward at it, but that's where I think, alright, getting to that committee, we need to find ideas.
Yeah, exactly.
And reasons why we can do it.
And look at the buildings holistically.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean-
I mean, we've just been talking about this back building for, I've been in meetings and things for too long now, it's just-
I, I don't think it's viable, I think that the only, the only solution back there is to tear it down, you would never choose to renovate that space.
Well, you're gonna know when that, when they go through the mold testing in there, if they tell you, hey, Chris, this place is, then we're gonna have to-
Yeah, it's, for what it is, you know, if it was built to be a cheap add-on to a building, it's, you know-
It's run its course.
What it is.
If you need, if you need more of that kind of space, it's gonna be cheaper to demo that and rebuild that space in some way.
Yep.
That's where you're gonna end up with that, but there is a perception in town that that is, has some value, and that it is, you know, salvageable, and it is the solution to all of our problems, but I don't think that's the case. And there's the, and there's the perception that the town, the Old Town Hall is, you know, that, that's sacred in its, in its location, and its, you know, everything about it, nobody would say, don't, don't keep it there, that's, that's the heart of dying in so many ways, but nobody's come up with a use for it.
Yeah.
We have line dancing at it right now.
I, I know.
Couple times a month, or once a week, and that's, that's the use of the building.
I mean, I-
And the garage next to it, the old firehouse, what is that?
That's used for storage right now, right?
Yeah, it's-
Yeah.
Yeah, and you, you've heard the problems with the, the highway garage, you can't fit the fleet in there, you can't wash your hands in there, the fuel tanks are a mess, the, you know, issues.
Who else got the old fire station building sitting there doing nothing?
Well, that doesn't have plumbing, it doesn't have-
I know, it's just a storage building.
Yeah.
But it's being used, I mean, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a-
I looked in, there wasn't much in there when I looked in it last time.
No, it's, it's a handful of random stuff, it's not, we could probably live without it.
Yeah.
You know, so the, the police department's ATV is in there, and some of the beach stuff is in there.
And the rec van goes in there winter, right? The rec van goes in-
The rec van goes in there in winter.
It's a garage.
At best, yeah.
So why don't we, why don't we talk about this in the fall, have some kind of committee and, and form something so we can really, now, the idea is to have a committee for all the municipality buildings, or just particular that, and then maybe something for, something else, what'd you have in mind?
I think for all town-
Buildings?
Town buildings.
Okay.
I mean, not the school, obviously, but, you know, the town-
The fire department included and all that?
Well, no, because the fire department's old, I mean, the fire department's new and fully functional.
Okay, so you're just looking at, obviously, the, the buildings over there and-
Yep.
Here, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I think that's something we should probably put on the agenda for the fall, and form a committee and going forward, that way we have a, as you said, get a vision going. Anything else with the?
Hmm, no.
No, alright. Oh, we have an appointment of inspectors of the elections.
Yes, that came from the moderator, uh-
We don't have to read him by his name, we just approve them all, right?
Current?
No.
Oh, she's got a way to read it.
I, I got it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I got it.
Thank you, Donna.
Unless there's any discussion, I'll go forward. I'll make a motion that the select board hereby appoints as inspectors of the elections as recommended by the moderator, names are as recommended by the moderator, effective August first, two thousand twenty.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? All in favor?
And Lauren, you've got all the names.
Yep.
Alright. Special event license?
Okay, so this is the last one, I sprung in yesterday afternoon, we became aware, I think the middle of last week, indirectly, of a planned event on one fifty-six at the gravel pit out there, a water cross, a snowmobile racing on the water event. The, we, we found out about it because of a, a kind of a fluke permitting thing that goes on with the fishing game around the use of the vehicles that way, or whatever, it kind of fell on us. So Chief Foss found out about it, came to me worried about, you know, what is this, it kinda came out of nowhere.
Was that why fishing game was here this week?
Probably.
Or last week?
Yeah, I know, they're, they're, they're around for lots of different things, but at any rate, we have not had a comparable event, really, of that sort in town, that size, or that flavor of event, really, just not something we've seen before. We've been trying to figure out what the size of it is supposed to be, how many people are supposed to be there, and so, between the, the health inspector, code enforcement officer, the police chief, and the fire chief, and the planner, and I, just trying to get our head around it, we learned a little bit more about it, I sent you some information from the people that are running it, and we, we got our heads around what our, what our enforcement regime really looks like, and where it fits within, what is the town governed, and, you know, what is our role, and something like that.
Yep.
And our, we, our approach has been, okay, what do we, what do we need to think about, what do we need to worry about, what do we need to do to see if this thing is to go forward, is there something we need to do to permit it, or trying to, trying to help it succeed rather than trying to get in its way. And we have, we have two things that are, that are points of the town being involved in it in some way, shape, or form, one is the land use angle, the zoning, and is it a permitted use, and is it, you know, those kinds of things. That, if you have a single event on your property of a private party, or you have a thing, it's not, doesn't become a permanent use, that's really not a zoning concern.
Yeah.
But when it turns into a, you know, a multiple event or a routine activity, then it can trigger things like site plan review, planning board, and is it a viable use, and that kind of thing. So we have that one body of regulation to tackle, which is around the land use, and then the other is around event licensing, and I sent you a statute that's full of old goofy language.
Yeah, puppets.
You know, rope tricks, or whatever, right? But that, that statute is the thing that the towns use to regulate things. regulate things like this. This is what Loudon uses to regulate the racetrack, you know, at the, at the extreme end. That's where the sound of Loudon's authority comes. To run an event that involves a competition like that requires a license from the select board. So, so, uh, you have not issued such a license in a very long time as a body. It's not something we've, you know, Chief Foss hasn't seen, I haven't seen it. Um, none of us have been through that process before. You don't have a, a mechanism for doing that. You've never had to do it, so you've never designed anything. And, uh, we can create something. It's not that, not that complicated. And we can get you a framework for how you want to discuss these things when they come up, if and when they come up. The kinds of things that, that you typically, uh, think about in a license are traffic, parking noise, environmental impact, sanitary stuff, trash, uh,
Yep.
you know, porta potties, those kinds of things. You'd have, you would, as a board, you'd say, okay, this event looks like it's covered all its bases and we can let it go forward without creating a big disruption for the community or a big cost burden for the community or safety concerns or whatever. So that is where you could get involved with this and say, this is, you know, you need a license to run an event like this. We don't have a whole lot of time. The first of these events is scheduled for a week from Saturday. And they are planning subsequent events a, a month and two months from then.
On the same location?
Same location, same scale, same, same idea. And so, uh, we, the, the staff met today and talked through all these things and I, and I spoke with the property owner. And I, what I have to give you is kind of two choices. It's, uh, that, that at least we could think of. One is to say, um, these are, this is too much for us to handle at the last minute like this. You're just, you're just getting this, you're getting this ten days or twelve days before an event with a couple, three, four, five hundred people. I mean, well, it's a few hundred probably. Potentially noisy, potentially disruptive. Don't know. It's too much for us to, to handle on short notice like that.
Yeah.
Sorry, we can't get into licensing this today. And that's the way the ball goes and that's okay. Um, that's one option I think you have. Um, and you can tell us to just see that the event doesn't happen because it doesn't have a license. We can do that. Second option is to, uh, throw it back to the staff and say, come up with, uh, something that as a, a trial, you know, make up something that would, would look like a license and conditions that, that the, that the owner and the event manager would have to meet and see how it goes, you know, ten days from now. You, you show it to you and say, this is what we've agreed to. Are you comfortable with, uh, issuing a license for this event with these parameters and those? We have an idea of what those parameters are and the staff came up with those things around, police details and EMS, you know, EMS coverage and porta potties and things like that. And the event people are amenable to those things, I think. So that's the other option. If you, if you want us to try and make this happen with a, with a licensing, you can tell us, go figure it out.
How much money do we make off the licensing?
How much, what? How much money?
Yeah, there are fees involved or?
Yeah, there's, there's probably a fifty dollar fee or something like that.
That's where I'm making any money.
No, no, no.
Would we ask them to like make some kind, like a refundable deposit just to cover a potential response or?
Uh, we, yeah, we could probably do that. Um, the,
Well, they mentioned about paying two for the police officer that was there.
That'd be a detail thing.
Yeah, and it says they have an EMS.
And they have an EMT. Um, yeah, I think the fire chief would want an ambulance parked there, a private ambulance just to ease our
burden, yeah.
What about the line in here where it says, we've been in contact with Nottingham police and they agree a detail is not needed?
Well, there was, there was a preliminary conversation last week in the context of, hey, what, what the heck is this? We just learned about this.
Yep.
Uh, the police chief's, uh, initial thinking is, if you've got traffic control, we may not need to force you to have a detailed person.
Okay, okay.
Particularly on the first day where you, you see what they're capable of and how many people it has, right? What we heard today was there's a couple hundred people registered.
So that, that being said, a couple hundred people, there's probably going to be vendors there too, right?
Uh, there was, there's one open question about a food truck.
Right.
Uh, which we haven't completely solved from a regulatory point of view. Um, I think it's pretty.
Which requires inspections and all that other stuff for that as well and a permit for that too, right?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have anything. There's a state
Right.
regiment in there. We don't have anything in place, so, um, I don't think we would try and whip something out at the last minute. You know, at a, at a two or three hundred people scale, um, that's not going to attract a whole lot of commercial interest.
Yeah, yeah. Because it's over the course of the weekend too, right?
Yeah, I, I think it's probably.
It's not two hundred all at once.
I think it might be two hundred all at once, you know, each day.
Well, if that's two hundred registered to ride, then you've got to consider friends and family.
No, 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 they're two hundred people watching.
Yeah, two hundred people coming.
Oh, okay, okay. Two hundred attending, alright.
There are a lot of the same people that, uh, do ice golf. They participated in it from the Legion and Raymond and all that. And, uh, Tammy, the one that's in charge here, that's her property. She's a realtor. She's, you know, they're, they're good people. I know that.
But this has the potential of being big down the road.
The, the, uh, the, the initial fear from, particularly from Chief Foss's point of view and, and to a lesser extent, the rest of us, was we can't let this become the Epping grass drapes all of a sudden, which is a twenty thousand person affair. That does not seem like their intention here.
At least now.
Right. Um, and we wanted to make sure we had, you know, we were, we're thinking about precedent and saying, you know, okay, the town's going to have some involvement in this from the beginning. You know, we're not, we're not just going to let it go without some involvement. We can't just watch it happen without, you know, enforcing your regulatory rights because if it starts and you, it's harder to,
Yeah.
Harder, you know, harder to implement those things later, so.
Can, I mean, we've got nothing in town that is similar to this and we have no.
We, we were sitting around today trying to think of what are those, you know, what are those things that get, you know, there's the pancake breakfast and the boat parade and the,
Yeah, well, I mean, we did.
Nottingham Day.
We did ice golf for years and.
Yeah, but just,
Yeah.
We couldn't come up with anything comparable, so that's why we're kind of
Is it, is it an option to solve? This has come up last minute. Um, we don't want to spoil anybody's fun and we want to make sure that these guidelines are in place, ask the staff to make sure that these guidelines. But we, um, that's for this one event only, this one weekend only. And we want to come back. The board's going to look at this a little more closely.
Yes, that is absolutely a possibility. You don't, you don't have to approve, you know, three events, you know, and we wouldn't want you to do that because we've got to see what really happens.
No, I think that'd be good. Just a one time, you know, let's see how it goes. And if it's a, you know, nice thing, we don't hear anything about it. If they want to do it again next year, fine, so be it.
What they're, they're thinking about the one in August. You know, we've got one coming up in a few weeks and we would, we would use the, the time here between now and then to come up with, okay, here's the plan for this one.
Their location is actually,
It's good.
It's good.
Yeah.
I mean, there's off street, I mean, I mean, there's so much parking back in that area. The pond's off to the side. It's a bit, I mean, it's.
Art Jenks is apparently in on it. He owns the rest of the land back there. There's plenty of room.
Plenty of room.
I mean, can we just say that, Chris? I mean, we give them, you know, say, go ahead with this weekend and then we're going to see how that goes and either August is, if everything goes well.
Yeah, because I'd, I'd go watch it just to see what happens.
Think if we have a select board team and have Donna go across the water with a sled.
Yeah, I, I just want to think.
Nine hours six.
I just want to think about the number of people.
Two hundred altogether.
No, 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 not, not this first one, but five years from now when it's been there and it's bigger.
Could we do that though? Could we say, you know, this thing can never grow bigger than?
Well, we can also, we can also issue the permit every year. And we can deny him the.
You can do it every month.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we, then we could just deny it so you can't have it. And then that's it.
So that's, so that would be my recommendation is, let's ask you guys to come up with the parameters for this one, right? And then let's, as a board, decide what our course of action is going to be after this one. Whether it's reviewing it every year or whatever, we need that.
And it's asking us to come to the event.
What's that?
It's asking us to come watch and, and check it out.
I used to go watch the one in Northwood.
Complimentary tickets?
Did it?
Yeah.
Tony comp tickets.
Comp tickets? Comp hot dog? So here's a question. What about Northwood? This is, they've been doing it in Northwood for fifteen years, so it's,
Yeah.
It's the one I'm thinking of. Can you reach out to Northwood and find out what were the conditions that they put on their permits? What, what fees, you know, just to
Similarity.
shine a light on the dark for us that they might be able to help.
I think this location's way better than Northwood because I always, I used to go to the farm up there and it was,
They carry a two million dollar insurance policy. So that's good.
The one I know too is the fact that the six condos that are on the Pottock River right there, the resident, there's two houses right there, which I don't think the first one have a problem, but I don't know about the new people that own the other one. There's not a lot of properties there.
There are neighbors. There are.
There are neighbors, but it's not like it's a huge, but, because it, it's loud.
Yeah. It's, Yeah, one of the, the, the property owner verbally had said to one of us that she had reached out to the neighbors, but we've not had any, you know,
And
follow-up on that or anything.
Properties could change and somebody else who moved in could have a problem with it.
Yeah.
Oh, sure, yeah. It's gravel pit to start with.
They make generous donations to town.
I, I, I would go along with what Tyler and Donna had said. Like, let them go with this, but we've got to have something in place.
But anyway, do it for one weekend.
Yeah.
With the parameters that.
Yeah, but I also want to see an officer as a detail because if they're expecting a couple hundred people, I mean, that's a lot of traffic.
Is that a, is that a town road or is that a state?
State.
I think, I think there should be two cops on the state road. I mean, I know when we, we work out there with state, uh, not state police officer. On town roads, we don't have to, but anything state.
And what is the hours of this event?
That's one of the parameters we have to set in terms of.
Yeah, time of day restrictions.
Noise hours.
Yeah, it can't be ten o'clock at night.
No, six AM, six AM Saturday morning until six AM Monday morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Tyler?
I don't know how from there, okay?
I would say that, that might be one of the biggest complaints from any, any of Butters is nighttime noise, so maybe cut them off at like seven PM or something.
We have noise on ordinances, right? We don't.
Wow. Guess there's some things we need to be working on, huh? Okay.
I would definitely reach out to Northwood to get some guidance on parameters.
And how big is, how big was Northwood? About the same? Two, three, four?
Yeah, it was mostly when I was doing, going up to Northwood and stuff like that, you know, I was, the local snowmobile, the Northwood Crankpools was one of the big promoters of the thing. And in there and it was,
The what?
The pond was small. It really wasn't that big. And you'd see the people just around there. And then they were doing their re, it really was, people were bringing their lunches and stuff and it wasn't anything.
But this one's bigger.
The one that they're having here?
Yeah.
I don't think it's, I don't know if it's going to be any bigger than that. I mean, those were.
They said the land is more accommodating, so that kind of implies.
So is that growth? Would they be looking like they're closing down Northwood and move everything down here or they?
No, no. I think they just, they're looking to, you know, to do these events if, if possible in different, you know, areas.
Okay.
So that's, that's what I got.
Do you want to discuss this?
Uh, you've got the,
You know, it would have been nice if they came in front of the board so we could answer some of his questions, but.
Alright, we got to go then. We got to go make sure nothing happens.
I'm going there.
Comp tickets.
That's what you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. I just didn't know.
Tickets.
It's just.
Okay, so, uh, I will, uh, come back to you electronically with a framework of, these are the parameters that everybody's agreed to. And on your authority, issue a one-time permit once everybody's got a chance to see those things over the next week or so.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. And we all need to sign this. We discussed that before.
Yes. Okay, that, I think is enough to keep us moving. That will keep residents, um,
Yeah. There's all this stuff to sign here.
Uh, is that all of the non-agenda stuff that I dropped on you?
It's interesting to read though.
Oh, yeah.
What's today? Seven thirteen?
Thirteen.
One day, the thirteenth.
One of the guys that I know, he, he heard about, he, the hours would be ten to three.
Ten to three?
Well, that's not bad.
That's not bad.
Yeah, and maybe, there's maybe warm-ups or whatever, but we'll,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll come to something reasonable for neighbors and I, I, my understanding is there's a practice day and then two event days. A Friday would be a practice day and Saturday and Sunday would be event days.
I think they're a responsible group. I will say that. I mean, the ones that I know, and I know that they do good charity work on, on all kinds of stuff.
So when people say there's nothing to do in Nottingham, you can say, yes, there is.
Oh, yeah? You've never heard about that?
Snowmobile in the summer.
I went to the, the winter event that they held up at the, up in Northwood a couple times and it was, it was fun. I was actually considering
Yeah.
taking my sled dragging across the water, but it's like,
Did I tell you that right?
I don't think I'd make it. Yeah, I absolutely would not make it. And I didn't want to be that guy that had to go getting his sled floated out of the pond.
Wait, you did it?
No, no, I was considering it, but I have a touring sled.
You just sold my snowmobile.
Panther six sixty, so it's a station wagon with skis.
Okay.
It's not, not suited to high-speed skimming across a body of water. So I'm like, man, no. No, no.
I can hear us all out, Tony.
Well, I'm not a dogman.
That would be funny.
Bring a snorkel.
Yeah, I was going across Northwood Lake once, uh, right, you know, next to Route four there. And the ice was buckling and breaking under my tread and it, it, yeah, I saw my life flashing before my eyes. I just, I just laid on the throttle and went as fast as I could towards shore.
I went swimming once.
Thank God I made it.
I went through the ice on Eric's four-wheel allowance.
See?
When we first moved out.
Fun experience. This water's cold.
But it floated.
Yeah, only the back end of mine when the motor stayed up on the ice. It was just the back cracked. Black color, so.
There you go, stop on that one. Back page.
Are we going to a non-public? Okay. Okay, so.
That's the end of that one.
Could be my record from last weekend.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion adjourned?
Six, slap it anywhere.
Slap it anywhere?
Slap it anywhere. With the other signature.
Should I adjourn?
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion adjourned. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.